Good evening, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of September 25th, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any item not on the agenda for that date nor planned for future agenda. Today is one of those days for open microphone session. Madam Clerk, would you please call our first item?
Our first item on today's agenda for Monday, September 25th, 2023, is a notice due to the Columbus Indigenous Peoples' Holiday. City Council will not meet on Monday, October 9th of 2023. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, sections one, two, and three.
Is there anyone here to speak on the consent agenda, anything on the consent agenda, under items one, two, or three? Anyone here to speak on the consent agenda? Chris, come on down. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. I'm Chris Lambert, Executive Director of Lincoln Housing Authority, 5700 R Street. I just want to briefly introduce you to an appointment on your agenda for our Board of Commissioners. Just a quick reminder, we have a five-member board that is appointed and confirmed to five-year terms by the mayor and city council. This is to fulfill the remaining two-year terms of an existing term. One of our members is always a resident of one of our housing programs, and our previous resident commissioner had to resign, and so that created the opportunity for an opening for Artie Kelly, who is a resident of Mahoney Manor, which is one of our developments in the Havlock neighborhood. So with that, I would introduce Artie Kelly to you.
Hello, welcome.
Hi. Yeah, I'm really glad to be here. I really appreciate the opportunity to help out with the Lincoln Housing Authority. My background is such that I've encountered different times throughout my life where housing was really, well, with everybody, housing is important. We have to keep it in the budget and like that. In different times of my life, it's been very difficult. As a single mother, as a, worked with the treatment center with women, with children who were trying to rediscover their lives, with aging, going back to college at 60 to get my degree in gerontology and looking at aging in place. So all of this brought to the point where, three years ago, I moved here to Nebraska from Oregon, and I needed affordable housing and good medical care. Unfortunately, Oregon's waiting list for the authority there is five to eight years, and here it was eight months. So I packed up everything and moved back here. And so when I had the opportunity to apply for this job, or for this position, it just, I felt, felt into my background and my interests and my experience. So I'm very glad to have this opportunity to be appointed for this. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. We appreciate it. Do we have any questions from councillor members, councillors for Ms. Kelly? Ms. Kelly, if you want to come back. Councilman Duden, the floor is yours.
Ms. Kelly, you rent your daughter in Lincoln Lancaster County?
Yes, uh-huh. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Kelly? All right, seeing none. Thank you for giving of your time and talent to the organization and the Lincoln Housing Authority and the City of Lincoln, by extension. Thank you. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on anything on the consent agenda, items one, two, or three? Anyone else for items one, two, or three? Okay, seeing none. Let's move forward with those votes. Madam Clerk.
Item 1A is reappointing Amira Azimi to the Mayor's Multicultural Advisory Committee for a term to expire September 18th of 2026, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-1. Item 1B is reappointing Kathleen Neary and Rick Poore to the Charter Revision Commission for Terms Expiring July 15th, 2026, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-1. Item 1C is appointing Artie Kelly to the Lincoln Housing Authority Board for a term to expire July 1st, 2025, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, six, oh, excuse me, 6-0. Item 1D is reappointing Andrea Snowden to the Charter Revision Commission for a term expiring July 15th, 2027, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-1. Items 2A and 2B were introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber. Discussion. Seeing none.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to section four, our public hearing liquor resolutions. Also, as a reminder, the clerks are using a digital system here to help with the timing and aiding with your testimony. You have five minutes for testimony. The green light will indicate for you to start. The yellow light will indicate that you have one minute remaining, and the red light will indicate your time is up. Next items are items 4A and 4B, which I'll call together. Application of Lincoln Holdings LTD doing business as Ramos Pizza for a Class I liquor license located at 2435 South 48th Street, and the related manager application of Nader Sepapura.
Good evening, Council. Nader Sepapura for Lincoln Holdings Ramos Pizza.
Welcome. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. Could you tell us a little bit about the application?
Well, it's a business that's been in existence for 30 years with a huge local following, and I'm just hoping to carry the torch and we do what they've been doing, continue on
Very good.
Keep our customers and neighborhood happy.
Well, I know a lot of people like that particular pizza, so
Not changing it.
I'm sure they'll be happy.
Not changing it.
All right. Questions for our applicant at all? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on items 4A or 4B? Anyone else here to speak on items 4A or 4B? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move approval of items 4A and 4B.
Second. Second, Carlson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. That concludes section four of our agenda. We shall move on to section five, our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is approving an interlocal agreement between the city and the city of Lincoln Lancaster County Railroad Transportation Safety District for the construction, repair, maintenance, removal, and/or replacement of railroad crossings, including adjacent pedestrian sidewalks.
Director Elliott, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, 555 South 10th, Suite 208. This is an interlocal cooperative agreement, fairly regular, that we do with the RTSD Board to do some improvements to various intersections. This first one, sorry, just want to make sure I have the right one. This one is for some general intersections. We don't have a defined list at this point, but as we go through and assess different railroad crossing areas, these are ones where we partner and try to make minor improvements. As you can see, it's just a one-year deal, $250,000, so they're more of the minor improvements that this contract would see. So, happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for Director Elliott? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5A? Anyone else here who would speak, who would like to speak on item 5A? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to 5B.
Item 5B is approving the interlocal agreement between the Railroad Transportation Safety District and the city to accept the transfer of funding for the sidewalk construction across BNSF tracks near Sixth and Old Channing.
Director.
All right, thank you. This one is, as you can see, for a specific location, and for some minor improvements, some crossing panels, and some sidewalks leading up to it. Again, this is less than $250,000. It is a one-year contract and in cooperation with the RTSD and the city.
Any questions for Director Elliott? Okay, very good.
Easy so far. Thanks.
So far, so good. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5B? Anyone else here for item 5B? Okay, let's move on to 5C.
Item 5C is approving the Lincoln Electric System Administrative Board adoption of LES Resolution 23-11, recommending the adoption of the Federal Public Utility Regulatory Policies Act, PURPA, standard regarding demand response practices and adopting a modified federal standard regarding electric vehicle charging programs.
Ms. Hale, welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Good to see you all. I'm waiting to make sure my presentation will come up here.
Let there be light.
I know Beau will take care of me. There we go.
There it is.
So my name is Lisa Hale. I'm the Vice President of Customer Services for Lincoln Electric System, and our main office is at 9445 Rockabye Road here in Lincoln. And I have a presentation here today. It might take a little bit over five minutes, so I just wanted to make sure that that was okay with council. So, the first question I probably need to answer is what exactly is PURPA? PURPA stands for Public Utility Regulatory Policies Act. This was enacted in 1978 by the federal government in reaction to the energy crisis in the 1970s. The goals of that law were to promote conservation, ensure reliability, and also promote energy efficiency in the generation and delivery of electricity. As you can see, section 111A has a part underlined, and that is where it is applicable to LES. Since we are not a regulated utility, we have the requirement that we shall consider each standard established and make a determination concerning those standards. So what is in that "shall consider" requirement for LES? First of all, there needs to be a public hearing that is appropriately noticed to the public. Then we also need to give consideration to the pertinent federal standards. And then, in that determination, it must be in writing. It must be based upon our findings in our determination, and we must provide evidence presented at that hearing. The hearing must be publicly available, and we may choose to implement a standard. We can choose to decline to implement a standard, or we can choose to adopt and implement a modified standard. And for this particular effort, we need to have this completed by November 15th of this year. And our board actually also has approved a resolution regarding these items. So the items before you today to be considered are part of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, specifically to section 111D of PURPA. Two items were suggested or should be considered as part of the IIJA. The first one is pertaining to utility demand response, and I won't read all of this to you, but you'll notice that the underlined language indicates that each electric utility shall promote the use of demand response, and so on. Section 40431 is the consideration of measures to promote greater electrification of the transportation sector, and in this section, I underlined each state shall consider measures, so there is a slight variation between the two. So, the public process as part of that "shall consider" process. LES presented to our administrative board an overview of our current LES programs, rates, and activities pertaining to these two items at our June 16th board meeting, and then we held the required public hearing on July 25th, where our staff gave a detailed presentation similar to the one that was given to the board in June, and we provided both in-person and virtual options for attendance at that meeting. We had 10 customers attend in person, as well as four other customers submitted comments during the comment period that ended on July, or excuse me, August 11th of 2023. Then, in August, at our board meeting, those comments were shared with our board, and a resolution was adopted by our administrative board at that time. So, the demand response feedback that we received was overall very favorable towards, especially towards our Peak Rewards program, and some of you may be familiar with that. That is where customers can choose to enroll their Wi-Fi-enabled thermostat into the program, which allows us as the utility to then control that in the case of a curtailment event. And there's specific rules around that in terms of the number of times that we can do it, and each summer, and we do that successfully with approximately 3,300 thermostats that are currently enrolled in that program. The questions that we did receive from customers were pertaining to the interest in having multifamily developments participate in that Peak Rewards program, which we have been working very closely with some new construction developers to see if there would be any interest in participating in that. However, the technology does pose some difficulty at this time, simply because when a thermostat is installed, that is the time that you typically register for that program. And so if you are living in a multifamily, you know, apartment or something like that, once the thermostat is installed, it's very difficult to, or we have not, the manufacturers who actually control that have not really come up with a way for us to, you know, uninstall and then apply for that program for the next tenant. And then, the other question that we received about that was wanting to expand Peak Rewards to other proprietary thermostats, which also is limited by the technology that we have, simply because in order for us to be able to use our demand response management system, the manufacturers have to comply with a standardized, open automated demand-response communication standard, and that's obviously of their choosing. So I will say, though, that as more and more companies adopt this communication standard, we do have more and more thermostats that are able to be enrolled. One example is Echo B, which is a very large manufacturer, recently accepted that standard, so we were able to enroll a lot of additional customers using that technology. So pertaining to the EV charging feedback, we did have several questions around this, essentially more about curiosity about where the industry or the technology is going. First of all, we had questions about how we were going to support increased load, and which was a very good question. However, we currently have only about 1,500 registered EV vehicles in the service territory, and at this time, we've done research that indicates that only about 15% to 20% of charging actually occurs during our peak period, which is during the summer months between the hours of 2 and 8. So, right now, that isn't necessarily a problem for us, but our engineers and other staff are keeping a close eye on load on our residential transformers, and will monitor that closely and make adjustments as needed. A most immediate concern for us is fleet charging, and we are working very closely with any of our customers who are wanting to electrify their fleet so that we can counsel them on how best to charge those vehicles. Another question was pertaining to rates and whether or not we use time-of-use rates for chart, you know, to encourage off-peak charging, but as I mentioned before, right now, we're seeing that kind of happen on its own organically. We had questions about EV rebates. So essentially, our SEP program is designed so that all of our customers derive benefit from each of our programs from reducing demand on the entire system. That would not be the case for incentivizing the purchase of EVs. However, we have worked with the other agencies in facilitating the application for those grants, and we, I'm drawing a blank here. I think it was NET that had some funding available, and we were able to facilitate the receipt of rebates from our customers. Then, requests to endorse charging standards for DC fast charging. Again, that's not something that we are able to control as well as DC fast charging reliability. And then, we did have a question from a customer about the demand charges that we assess on bills, but that is something that, because we are required to determine our rates in a fair and non-discriminatory way, we are unable to, you know, move those costs over to other customers in different rate classes. So particularly fast charging is a lot of energy in a very short period of time, which requires us to have a lot of power available to that customer and a lot of different infrastructure available, and those costs need to be borne by those customers that are incurring those charges, or requiring, causing us to have to incur those charges. So, our board adopted Resolution 2023-11, in which they chose to adopt the federal standard regarding demand response practices, and then they chose to adopt a modified federal standard for the EV charging programs. So if you recall back on that first slide, I mentioned that the demand response practices were specific to electric utilities. So that is something that we have much more control over, and so we were comfortable with adopting the federal standard. However, the EV charging program standard is something that is controlled more by the state, so to that end, we are able to only do what we can do as a utility. So in your packet, there is, we didn't change any of the existing wording, but we did add additional wording, which states LES will continue to monitor research and, when feasible, develop programs to support adoption of electric transportation, and will serve as a source of information and consultation for stakeholders, including fleet operators, multifamily developers, businesses, residential customers, and other community stakeholders. In addition, the utility will continue to monitor and evaluate options available to support demand response programs and enabling technologies. So with that, you, as the city council, are required, as the retail rate-setting authority, to accept, if you choose to, the resolution that this, our LES Administrative Board adopted in August. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Lisa?
I have no questions. It was a very thorough presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at all, from anyone? Councilman Duden?
That would not be something that we would be responsible for doing. I know Shelley Salingsart is here today, and she is our general counsel and also works in the legislative body representing LES, and I know that there have been questions and conversations around that, but that's not really something that we have any control over.
I want to know if you have any information on it.
Oh, she may have information. I do not. Oh. There we go.
Lisa, thank you for the information. We really, we really appreciate it. You know, I think as communities continue to have conversations about demand response and demand rates, especially as we see our neighbors over in Missouri starting to work towards this fall, taking on new demand rates throughout the entire state, you know, I think this conversation will continue to happen over and over, and we really appreciate the information that LES provides to us, and the board and the work that they do. So, thank you on our behalf. We appreciate it. Okay, very good. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5C? Anyone else here to speak on item 5C? Okay. Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
We can now vote on these items. Item 5A is approving an interlocal agreement between the city and the city of Lincoln, Lancaster County Railroad Transportation Safety District for the construction, repair, maintenance, removal, and/or replacement of railroad crossings, including adjacent pedestrian sidewalks, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Showob. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Showob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 5B is approving the interlocal agreement between the Railroad Transportation Safety District and the city to accept the transfer of funding for the sidewalk construction across BNSF tracks near Sixth and Old Cheney, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Showob. Discussion. I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank those members of the city council that serve on the Railroad Transportation Safety District and also thank this particular, these particular improvements and the safety that they will bring to the Lincoln community as well. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Showob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 5C is approving the Lincoln Electric System Administrative Board adoption of the LES Resolution 2023-11, recommending the adoption of the Federal Public Utility Regulatory Policies Act, standard regarding demand response practices and adopting a modified federal standard regarding electric vehicle charging programs, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Showob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Okay. That concludes section five of our agenda. We shall move on to section six, our public hearing ordinance to second reading and related resolutions. Items 6A and 6B will be called together. Item 6A is street and alley vacation 23003, application of Venture Holdings LLC to vacate West Cleveland Avenue between Northwest 48th Street and Outlot B, Heartland Homes Northwest Sixth Edition, adjacent to Lot 37, Block 1 and Lots 1 and 2 and Lots 41, Block 5, Airport Heights Edition, and Outlot B, Heartland Homes Northwest Sixth Edition, generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Madison Avenue. And the related street name change 23002, application of Venture Holdings LLC to change the name of West Madison Avenue to West Madison Place due to the proposed cul-de-sac on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Madison Ave.
Rick, welcome.
Good afternoon. Rick Onan with the NA Consulting Group, 701O Street, Suite 400. Here today on behalf of Venture Holdings LLC. And again, a couple of things before you are related to an amendment to Heartland Homes First Edition CUP. I'll show you, this is the plan that was approved back in 2008. This is Northwest 48th Street, Adams Street for reference. This plan showed Madison Avenue coming through and then a short connection and Cleveland Avenue coming through connecting, and basically for a townhome development. The plan, or the CUP, was amended earlier this year to this plan, which shows multifamilies instead of, rather than townhome. And so basically what we're asking is that Cleveland Avenue would be vacated, so it would be essentially a private drive rather than a public street. And then related to that, that makes Madison Avenue a dead end, so that then would get renamed to Madison Place. We will maintain a common access easement over the area of Cleveland Avenue that would be maintained for access to, there's an existing C store in this location, and then a couple of properties to the north of what's currently Cleveland Avenue because they don't have direct access to Northwest 48th. One point that you should have gotten a memo on from planning, condition 1.4 in the report, LTU initially had requested that the storm sewer that was in that vacated area would become private. They then kind of changed their mind and decided they want it to remain public, and it'll stay within an easement. The applicant's fine with that, and so condition 1.4 can be struck. That's really all I've got, unless you have any other questions.
Any questions for Rick? Okay. Seeing none? Thank you. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on items 6A or 6B? Anyone for 6A or 6B? Okay. Just councilwoman.
I have a question for staff.
Okay, very good. I see we have Director Carey in back.
Good evening, Director Carey.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street.
I'm not trying to push you past your regular responsibilities, but I'm going to ask you to, if you have any knowledge of the appraised, I know that we have an appraisal on the vacation, but I was wondering if the retention of the sewer as public changes the value of the property.
Yes. So my understanding is that it does not have an impact on the value of the property. It still can function as an access point. And the functionality would not be all that different. It's really the maintenance part of it that really was in question, and so that has been cleared up now. So it really would not have an impact on the assessed value of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Carey?
Thank you.
Seeing none? Thank you. One last call. Anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6A or 6B? Okay, let's move on to 6C.
Item 6C is change of zone 08057F, application of John Osiri to amend the University Place PUD Plan Unit Development to allow the sale of alcohol for consumption on and off the premises closer than 100 feet to residential zoning district on property generally located at 2737 North 49th Street.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. You may remember me from several weeks ago. Thank you for delaying your vote and giving us some time to go back to the drawing board. So we did do what we needed to do. I took some time to, my name is John Osiri.
Thank you, John.
2737.
I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
North 49th Street.
Good catch.
So we went back to the drawing board and I worked with the planning department. And what we did was to figure out a way to make this work. So what they recommended is we only use the west side exit. So each side door will remain closed, except for emergencies or for cleaning and things of that sort. But in terms of opening for the public and for business, it will be the west side access. And there are two doors on the west side. One can serve as exit, another one can serve as a main door as well. Also, on the west side, we have a parking space there as well. So we are trying to be able to serve alcohol in that space because there's a business that we call best kept secret that will be happening there. It's going to be a place for cultural and intellectual exchange. People can come and relax and enjoy. We're going to be featuring art from different parts of the world, food, and of course beverages. So that is essentially what we're trying to do there, and this is where we are now. Once again, thank you for being patient with us, and I think we got it done now. Unless you have any questions.
Thank you, John. We appreciate it. Any questions for John? Questions? Yes, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, thanks for coming forward again.
Thank you.
You said this is the best kept secret, so when do we get to talk about it? When will you be hosting events?
As soon as we get our liquor license, then we'll start. Because I think once, if hopefully, if I prove, I believe it goes back to the state, and then we'll have to hand back from them. So we'll make sure we invite you all to come and be part of it. And let me also quickly announce, we are part of the new creative arts district in Lincoln, as you've heard. That whole area, the UNI place, has been granted creative arts district designation. So we are very excited, and we are going to be part and parcel of the folks that will really make that place pop and really enjoyable for folks who want to come enjoy Lincoln. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for John? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 6C? Anyone else here who would like to testify on item 6C? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to 6D and 6E.
I'll be calling item 6D and 6E together. Item 6D is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for the employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by N. And the related labor contract between the city of Lincoln and public association of government employees for a term effective August 17, 2023 through August 31, 2024.
Good evening.
Director McIntyre, welcome.
Barb McIntyre, 575, I always want to say 555, but 575 South 10th Street until we move back. I am here to talk to you tonight about PAGE and just a few details and reminders, this is stuff you know, but we'll go through it again, that PAGE is one of our unions. It's the Public Association of Government Employees. That union represents about 500 employees. They are our maintenance, our technical, our clerical employees who work basically throughout every department we have at the city. So they are really represented everywhere that we have. We really appreciate the work that these employees do to support the high quality of life we have here in Lincoln. And that's why the terms of this offer that we gave to PAGE are higher than the terms that are comparable for this union in other cities that we looked at. It's in recognition really of that good work that they do. The PAGE contract expired on August 31, and we didn't start bargaining until June 21. And so due to that very short timeframe, we came to a mutual agreement that we would shorten this to a one-year deal to give us some time to still make some meaningful changes, specifically around wages and things like that. But to come back to the table then in one year, and it's not even one year, it's February of 2024, so we could have the time to really talk about the more complex issues that were on the table during this negotiation season and do them justice, because we just knew we didn't have enough time to talk about them. So those are kind of just some of the background and information on that, and I'll let Henry talk about the specific terms of what that offer looks like.
Henry, you're welcome.
Thank you, Barb. My name is Henry Weidrich. I'm an attorney with law firm Klein Williams Wright Johnson, old father here in Lincoln, 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900. I serve as the chief negotiator for the city and had the pleasure to work with PAGE on this contract. So Barb laid the groundwork where we were and how we started. After four negotiation sessions with the union, despite our efforts to give as a team on, within that narrower scope of items, which was really wages and some other pay issues, it became clear that we were not going to reach an agreement on wages, which happens sometimes. Ultimately, the negotiation team offered a last and best offer, which included the following terms. There was a 3% cost of living increase that exceeds the data that we had from our comparable cities, and it also matched the city's budget amount, and it also matched the increases received by three other unions, LCEA, LMCEA, and ATU, and also matched the increase received by unrepresented employees. In addition to the 3%, we increased the shift differential to 65 cents per hour, which was an 8% increase. That's for second shift. We increased the third shift differential to 80 cents per hour, which was 11% increase. We agreed to reallocate a police records tech to a higher pay range, starting in N21, which was a $1.96 hour increase at the bottom and 267 at the max. We agreed to increase the boot allowance from $175 to $210, which was a 20% increase. We made sure the paid parental leave terms got added to the contract. And then we added language at the union's request about confirming their participation in the city's 401A retirement plan, and we also made some operational changes that the union requested related to sick leave call-in and out-of-class pay rates. So it was a robust issue of terms that we offered, but we saw the distance between where they were and where we were. We made the last and best offer. On August 24, the union voted and rejected the offer. So now the city is taking the necessary steps to implement the terms of the last and best offer as we are at impasse. This implementation ensures that the employees receive these fair cost of living increases and the other benefits, including paid parental leave and the other items we talked about. Implementation also ensures that the city doesn't regress from its last offer at the table to ensure that we comply with the Nebraska Industrial Relations Act. I believe this is a fair contract for PAGE employees. It results in a cost of living increase above the overall trend data that we have for comparable cities, and it's aligned with other unions. All the items in last and best are positive changes for the employees. There were no trade-offs that the city demanded from the union for those terms.
Yeah, so I'm going to summarize what Henry said, really down into, I truly believe that a vote in favor of this recognizes it's well-deserved, it's a fair offer, it recognizes the value and the hard work of those city employees. It is above the comparable trend data we have for what is owed to that union. We want to make this retroactive back to August of when it would have been effective normally, so it will go back to August. We want to do that to make sure we're being fair here. And then that will stay in effect until we get to next August, because again, we have committed to come back to the table in February to work on not just the wages, because that'll be another topic we take up, but then some of those more complex issues that were raised during the negotiation session. So unless you have any questions, we will pause.
Any questions for Director McIntyre? Councilman?
I have a couple of questions. This is unusual, and I was wondering if you'd talk a little bit about the history of like, when's the last time that this has happened with the city and one of the employee groups coming to a similar position?
So the last time we came to what I would call impasse, it was actually with this union group. It was with PAGE, and I'm going to hope I get this year correct. So if I'm off on the year, I apologize. I think it was 2011. And what happened is when we went to move to impasse, the union still has the option to say, nope, we still aren't satisfied with this. So we really want to take this motion now to the Commission of Industrial Relations. And then if we get that letter, then the whole ball of wax goes over to the Commission of Industrial Relations, and they assign, this is where I'm going to need some help from Henry, but they assign someone to look at everything. It'll be all of the terms in the contract, not just wages, but the full contract. And they will look at it based on comparability of the array of cities. That array is probably going to be a lot of the same cities we use, but they try to take a look at what the city uses, what the union uses, and come to a mutually agreed-upon array of cities that are going to be used when they take a look at every single one of those terms of the contract. And it will be what's comparable. That is what they shoot for. So we've never actually gotten to a place to answer your question directly, where we simply have then imposed, because we got that letter, which status from doing that.
And I would say it's not necessarily unusual. Have we been successful in reaching agreements? Yes, that's the desire, but this is part of the process. Like if there's impasse, this is the next step. It's implementation, and they make an election on what they want to do. So is it something that happens all the time? No, because we reach agreements. But is it unusual outside the process? No, it's a part of the process.
So then what happens if the council votes to not move forward and push for this contract? Like what then happens for those employees?
Well, at this stage, the no vote would be considered that we're not implementing, and we would take that as direction to keep discussions going if we're not going to declare impasse.
Second question that I have is, you mentioned 3% cost of living, which exceeds the data that you already have. Can you talk a little bit about, with what you can share about the data that you have or what led to that number?
Sure. So, yeah, it does. So we use a seven-city array. And what we go out and do, this union, I guess I don't know how to answer questions shortly, so I apologize. I'm going to give you more information than you probably need. Okay.
There's no gotcha question here. No gotcha, because this is just trying to get information on the record.
So yeah. So this union has 88, approximately 88 classifications, and I'm just going to use round numbers. So what we do is for us to benchmark every one of those classifications, that's just generally not possible, right? So what we look at is those contracts in those other sister cities that meet the terms that we have to look at. And we say, what was their cost of living increase in their contracts? And we look out however many years that contract is for. Generally, it's two to three years is what you see. And we take the average of those. So if we looked at those seven cities we use in our array, we average it out. I'm just going to tell you, it was 2.65... I'm just going to tell you, it was 2.65 is what we owed this union according to our trend data. But we really felt like that offering them less than our other union groups wasn't the right move to make. It didn't seem fair considering that our other union groups had gotten 3%. Our unrepresented had gotten 3%. And so we talked about that as a negotiating team and we really wanted to align them internally and be equitable internally with our other union groups. So that that is how we got to that 3%.
One thing that PAGE will probably say is that they're not aware of what the the cities are, that the seven sister cities. Can you explain why that information's not shared?
I can. As the negotiator, there's always value and a little bit of uncertainty for both sides. It pushes both sides to maybe give and take or give more than they would ordinarily because they're they're not 100% sure what the data is. If it's disclosed and you agreed upon it, it's really just a math question. They might not have liked it disclosed either if we had agreed on them and the number comes out to less than what is offered. It turns into a math question. For both sides, it's important to keep some level of uncertainty to push the parties, employer and the employees, to reach an agreement, and that helps do that.
And I really don't know the answer to this question, but has that always been the process with the city where the city has not shared what sister cities that they've looked at?
Yeah, that's always been the process, even with other unions outside of the city when I've negotiated. So it's not unique to the city. It is something you don't share, you don't share your array. And most of that's been in private employer, but yeah.
They also had a case in 2011 where they there was an agreed-upon array in that case. So they have a benchmark. They know at least for in that at that time, the city was looking at these cities. So it's not like they're they're flying in the dark.
Then the last question that I have is when we talk about negotiating in good faith, the data said 2.65% cost of living. Can you tell us what the first number was that you approached the union with and said that we'll give you this cost of living increase as part of the negotiation?
Yeah, it was 2%.
2%?
And we thought, you know, depending on the 2.65, it doesn't give us a lot of room there, right? But as we talked more as a negotiating team on what we really wanted to do, we realized we didn't want to do 2.65. We wanted to align it and and make it internally equitable. So.
So the first percentage number was 2%. And I'm not a negotiator, so I don't know the answer to this question, but why not just start off with the 2.65% number? Like why start off with the 2% number if we're talking about negotiating in good faith?
Sometimes you do. It depends on all the other terms that are out there. And sometimes you just depending on the group, you need some room to move. And it's sometimes it's particularly if you don't have a ton of room, if you lead with your best number, sometimes that can be viewed as bad faith. Like they don't, they expect you to be a movement. They expect to be an increase. If you build that into your process, you're meeting those expectations. Now, sometimes we've done it depending on the group, you you go for the number right away. But we also didn't start significantly below where we were going to be and thinking, okay, we'll just take our time and get up there. We then moved pretty quickly to get above what we thought the comparability number was.
Thank you, Director.
You're most welcome. Yes.
Councilwoman. Yes, please.
Thank you for a clear presentation and I've got a couple of questions to follow on to my colleague, Councilman Bowers. He asked whether or not the city shared its comparable list of comparables. And I'm curious, do unions have a list of comparables that they use to calculate and were they shared with the city?
They do. So they all prepare their own data on comp. So they come to the table ready and prepared and they did not disclose who their array that they were using was. Did we did we ask for it? No, we did not. But they didn't disclose it voluntarily either.
So this is a system or a set of communications that are equal. You both come with your array. You hold those close and you begin your negotiations.
You do.
Yes.
Can you tell me, so the the contract that they have today expired on August 31st? And and I am curious, for how long can they be outside of a contract? So do you have 60 days after a contract expires to negotiate? Do you have a year? Do you have an indefinite amount of time?
We can carry on. I don't know. I don't know if we have an if there's an outside time limit. You can go beyond the contract. We've done that on a number of occasions. And then generally, we retro back to make sure it's not an issue, but.
But we can't stay status quo like and and do nothing. We have to be in the process of moving forward within the constraints we have to resolve something like this. Because I've gotten that question too. So staying status quo is not an option for us. We either have to move to impasse and implementation or go back to the table if we think there's more room to meet what we feel might be the one thing that's holding up the contract, which in this case is that salary piece, I believe. I mean, I'm not 100%, but I believe that is probably our biggest stumbling block here.
But at some point, we're supposed to reach impasse. I mean, you either reach an agreement or reach impasse. That's the I mean, that's the process as far as an outside time limit.
Okay. And if we have reached impasse, I guess, are there any other legal things we need to be thinking about, in your opinion? If we've reached impasse and we were to, if we were not to approve this, where would we be? And if we do approve this, even though we've reached impasse, you talked about going before another board and getting.
So from from the city's perspective.
Viation or something.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. As far as the city's perspective, once impasse is reached and we declare that and then we implement, our our actions are done. The union can make a decision on their own whether they want to pursue an action, but the city's taking the steps and if they don't, it's implemented. And it's it's treated as if the contract was is a signed contract.
And then last thing, I know that you said that we're offering, the city right now is offering a one-year contract with a promise to begin negotiations in February. Where is the February? Is there is it in law? Will it be in the ordinance or is it good faith? We're handshaking on this?
We are. And that's, go ahead, Barb.
It was what we agreed to and talked about that. Let's the couple of issues that are still on the table are around winter operations and different ways to do shifts, different ways to do that. So it's it's going to be a big topic. We need a lot of time to talk about that. And then the other thing that came forward is the city had or the city, I'm sorry, the county had a list of 29 positions. They would like us to do a deeper dive on those positions for actual market data on those, which is just a lot of work. And my team, there's just really wasn't time. That that is a big bucket of work. It's going to take us many weeks to get it done, but we want to do a good job. We want to do that work. And so that's where we said, can we come back in February? Because we're willing to look at these. And actually, we're going to look at all the positions, not just those 29 they brought forward, but let's just look at all of them because sometimes certain jobs, you've seen this, I've come in front of you, sometimes certain jobs slide and they get out of whack. And when that happens, we will, we try to keep a good eye on that and we bring them forward one at a time when we become aware that's happened. But this is a good opportunity for us to look at all the jobs under this union and just do a cushy look to say, have any of them slid? And do we need to, in addition to doing the overall cost of living increase, do we need to adjust pay lines for any of these other jobs or pay ranges for any of these other jobs because we found that? So we just really need the time to be able to take that deeper dive and look at that before we sit back down at the table.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman, please.
When did the negotiations start for this contract?
June 21, which is a fair amount later than we wanted to start, but that's when it was able to start. And we had sessions on June 26, 27, 28. July was a bad month for a lot of people, but they're one of their representatives. So we met as, once we found out we didn't have much time and we've started it and July was bad, we scheduled as many sessions as we could so we could spend time together.
Any other questions, Councilman? Nope. Okay. Other questions at all? Councilman Cho, yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to follow up a little bit on the time. You said we started, time is mentioned a lot during our testimony that we didn't have time, ran out of time. Things, when would you have liked to have started? How often do you normally meet? Was, I know you said we you tried to compress the time into June and skip July. And if we're, again, the time issue, are we going to start today? Are we going to wait till February and find ourselves in another time crunch if the council approves this and we move to another negotiation session? Help me better understand the time thing.
So traditionally, we would want to exchange proposals in February and March and start negotiations in person in April. And that's the schedule that we aim to accomplish with this group. And we did make multiple requests to exchange proposals and we did not get a response, a timely response on that. And at the time we met in June, I think proposals were brought to the table that day. Is that right, Barb? So usually we get them in advance and we have a few weeks to evaluate them. We got them the day it started. And then and so to understand July, there was, summer's always a little weird, but I was gone first week. I think Barb was gone last week. Their council was gone the two weeks in middle of July. And so also when we looked at the schedule, we said, and the reason the timing matters is so we can implement in a way that doesn't impact payroll and that because the retroactive and Barb can talk about that is a lot of work. And so the goal was to get it done. We had it. We had a drop dead date of.
They had to vote by, I think, August 4th. I'd have to pull it back. No, it was July 27th or something like that.
So we could get enough readings for council and get the contract through. So that's why we had these time constraints. Ideally, we would have started April. That was our aim. We were ready to do so, but it just didn't work out that way this time.
But February is starting two, two months earlier than we normally would in April. So we feel like if we do that, we will have time to really spend on this and get it hammered out. There's nothing that prevents us from starting now, but we also like to, the city data comes in at different points of time. The more data we have, the better cost of living position. We know what our data says. We know what our trend data looks like. It makes us more confident in what is comparable at that point. But I still feel like February will give us the time.
One more follow-up question, if I may. The contract expired, that didn't sound like the right word, but ended, previous contract ended in August. And the goal was always to get the contract negotiated and prepared and approved before the end. But is there another deadline? We're here now in October. Was this was this a date that was set in stone far long ago or we just looked at the calendar and said, this is the next day we can get it? How do we come to be here now with a final offer already and we're voting on something? Was there any considerations on the calendar as a date? How did you?
It was really a matter of, they held the vote on August 24th, if I recall the date correctly. So after that vote was held, it was really a matter of me visiting with mayor's office. What do we want to do? What's the correct path forward here? Having those conversations internally to really get good direction and and make sure everybody was clear. And I'll tell you the honest truth because we've not ever done this in front of council. It was getting guidance from legal about what are all the steps and taking the time to research that and have Yohansi's team provide us that to figure out what, how do we do this?
How do we do this? Yeah.
Once we got a really comfortable with how do we do this answer, then we moved it forward to this body. So it just took us a little time to get our hands around that because it was new. So I don't know that there was any magic to it other than us being like, oh, now now let's go figure out what's next.
What do we do next?
Yeah.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have three more questions.
Yep.
Please proceed.
You mentioned that you had to talk to legal. One question that I have is, did the union reps also have the same access to the city legal team? Or is it just the city management that had access to the city's legal team? Like if the union had a legal question, would they have the same ability to go up to Yohansi's office and say, we need to figure out the steps for this? Would they have the same access to those legal resources?
It'd be a conflict of interest for the city attorneys to advise the union group, which is a separate entity from the from the city. They'd be able to use their own resources and hire their own legal counsel and seek legal advice from their own attorney, which is they have an attorney that leads their negotiations and sits in.
So they would have to pay for their own attorney to have access to legal resources then and not the same kind of city infrastructure resources? Two other questions that I have. We we talked about time a lot and if we had started in April, do you think, there was this conversation about how, you know, that we're so far apart. Do you think that if there had been two extra months and if the if the negotiations had started in April, that you would have been able to come to some resolution with the union?
My personal opinion is no, but you never know. If we had more time to talk about the other items and get those satisfactorily resolved, that might have been enough to say, okay, well, then there's more compromise on a wage issue. So my my hunch is no, but I could be totally wrong on that. So if we address had time to address the other issues, there might have been more room for compromise on the wages, but we just weren't able to do that.
The reason why I say that and then I'll go to my next question is, you know, if one of the biggest issues is time and, you know, this didn't start in April and instead started in August, then why not just give a couple of extra months to, you know, make up for that lost time that didn't occur, which is kind of where I was going with that question and getting information about. Last question I have, and part of this is because I have a headache, so I need things explained to me a little bit more than usual. Why I rub in my head a little bit. When you mentioned about doing a deep dive for these 88 different position classifications, can you explain a little bit about what that means, what that looks like?
Yeah. And that's part of our our time equation. I know Henry answered, but but realistically, for the compensation team to even look at the 30 positions, the 29, I think it was actually exactly 29 that they said, hey, we think these 29 have slipped. So what what we are going to do is we're going to go out to those seven cities in our array. We're going to look at our classification description and their classification description because titles can match, but duties don't, right? And we've got to look at in detail at each of those classifications and do the duties matches. This a considered, it's got to be 50% 50% or greater match for us to say, this is a comparable job for us. And then we would look at their pay line and we would try to to do, the more matches we have, the more confidence we have in our our compensation data. So we are going to go look at all of those for each of these positions and then average out. If all these cities are paying this, what's the average of the min? What's the average of the max? Where's our min and max? And are we below or above? That would be considered like a market. And are we above or below that market? So I know that's probably way more detailed, but that's truly, that's why it's it's a time issue for me because we did not know that they were bringing in these 29 jobs forward. And I'm not even sure we got that on. I would have to go back and look until we sat at the table with them, right? So that that is weeks, maybe months worth of work for us to do all of the positions because we do want to go ahead and do all 80, not just the 30 or 29 they brought forward. But even doing those 29, that's weeks worth of work for us to actually sit down and get that deep into that compensation data to make sure we've got good market data on all of them. And that's really what we want to do so we have confidence. If we're going to suggest moving min and maxes, we want to know we've got good market data that supports that.
Gotcha. Thank you so much, Director.
Absolutely.
Councilman. Yes, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have a question for Mr. Weidrich in response to Councilman Bowers' question. So with time not being a factor in impacting this negotiation process, what can we expect come February to make sure that a year later, we're not in the the same position if time isn't really the the issue here?
The thing to remember is that we, no side can force an agreement. So like we could sit and be unreasonable. The union could sit and be unreasonable. No side can make any side. So if if somebody's going to stick into a position that is substantially above where we think compensation that is, or if we were for some reason stick below, there's no compelling that, right? So what we do is we come to the table and we're always on the mind of compromise. We find things, we come as a problem solvers. What are the things they worry about? Okay, can we fix that? Is that something that's a reasonable request? Yes, it is. Okay, what's something we're worried about? Can we ask for this? Is that reasonable? And the more time you have together, the more likely to reach those. But you can't, can I definitively say we won't have a similar wage dispute? I can't because I they get to make their own decisions. They get to decide what's important to them. And we respect that and that's part of the process too.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes.
Barb, can you talk about, excuse my voice and coughing earlier too, first off, but can you talk a little bit about hiring and in these particular classifications? Are there large openings or is there concern from your perspective in in hiring in these particular areas?
You know, what we do is when we really start having struggles to hire, we take those out of sync. So can I tell you, I'm going to tell you this, hiring is tough everywhere for every job we have. And finding quality talent, it's just something that we've been working really hard at and throwing extra resources at to try to get that done. And when we really start sticking and we cannot get candidates, then we go, like I talked about that, we call it a market review. We go do that market review. We don't necessarily wait for the contract to open up. We go do that market review and if we find that pay line has slipped, we go ahead and adjust it at that time and bring it forward to you guys to try to adjust those where we're really struggling the most. Now, our list is really long this year and we have a lot of positions that we actually have been informing directors. It's on our list. We will get to it, but there's so many requests right now. So there probably are some of the positions in this union that we have some struggles with and we need to take a deeper look at. I feel like we are positioned well because it's really like six months and we're going to sit down and have this conversation with them. And if we added it to the list today, right now, my comp- And if we added it to the list today, right now, my comp team is six months behind on work. So it's going to take us that long, even if it's just a new job you want us and you're putting on our list today. We're, we're looking at how we get them some resource to help to get that, that time shortened down. But we're really, really struggling. There's a lot of work right there.
Councilman Duden?
Have you thought about using an outside service to get some of this compensation data?
We have. The biggest challenge is that we have to use our cities that are in our array. And so when you look at a lot of outside services like salary.com or payscale or other places where they have a lot of compensation data, it's not going to be focused in on the cities that we have to benchmark to. So we literally go out to those websites and try to find that. What, what our solution is, is I think we're going to try to hire a compensation intern, because I don't have any more positions, I don't have any more dollars in my department to support this work. And so whether we source, outsource it to a consultant, I still got to pay that invoice when it comes. Or I feel like we can hire an intern, have them do some of the, the raw data gathering that then the comp team, comp team does the deeper analysis on for us. So I, I am looking at solutions to try to figure out how we move this along. It's not just sitting.
Think an intern would be able to understand the differences and responsibilities and job tasks and?
I think they can take off some of the, the work that, not the deeper analysis work, but if we can do parts of it and then give them the parts where they can support and help. I do think we can at least have them move some of the stuff off some of the comp teams plates that sits there today to the intern to give them time to look at the, the more complex work. So they won't be doing the analysis. That's, that's not what I'm saying, but I think it will give us a way to slide some work over.
All done, Councilman?
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Any other question, Councilman?
Last question for real this time. I, you mentioned this earlier, but I just want to be super clear on it. So the contract is supposed to go into effect August or whatever, right? X date. So even though it's going to be imposed or come to a resolution or whatever in a, a couple of weeks or months or whatever, folks will be backpaid from when it was supposed to be implemented. Just to be super clear, folks will be backpaid.
We are doing retro pay. Yes. We have committed to doing retro pay. I thought that was important. I, I think if we are, it's been a past practice at the city to do that. And I think if we're ever going to change that practice, the only way to do that is to give notice that, hey, if we can't get to the table, we can't get started on time. But again, that never occurred, right? So it, it would not be fair to change a practice that nobody had noticed. And I'm not even saying we're going to change it, but if we were ever to consider it, we need to give people notice that that's something we want to change.
Thank you, Director.
Mm hmm.
Any other questions? Director, I'll ask my question now. You stated at the beginning of your testimony that the 3% cost of living increase given to Page or offered to Page had been, that figure had been matched with other union contracts negotiated by the city in Lincoln as, in addition to unrepresented parties employed at the city as well. Could you or Lynn Heaton give me sometime this week, if possible, a very ballpark figure of what it would cost the city of Lincoln if we were to move from a 3% increase to say a 5% increase for these parties as a whole, not just Page? Is that?
Oh, you mean the entire, all of the unions?
Yep. Is that a number that you and Lynn and or Lynn can run?
We'll need to calculate it, but we are capable.
Okay.
Yeah, I will send it.
Councilman, but those are, there's existing contracts in place with those raises already negotiated in.
Correct. Yes.
So if to budget 5%.
I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting that we would change those by any means. I'm just looking for a dollar figure.
But for all of them?
Correct. Yep.
We can do that.
Yep. Certainly not, not proposing any changes, but I wanted to have a better understanding as to how those increases would impact the fiscal bottom line of the city. Very good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify in item 6D or 6E? Please come forward. And if there are multiple folks, we do have both microphones available, and we'll just go back and forth, one to the other, if people, multiple people would like to testify. Sir, welcome.
Hi. My name is Zach Chapo. I'm the president of the Public Association of Government Employees. Address 200 South 21st Street, Suite 400. That is of our attorney, and that's where we hold our monthly meetings. Before, I, I have a statement that I wanted to read, but if I could be allowed to go ahead and respond to some of the statements that they made.
You can talk about whatever you'd like to talk about.
In addition to five minutes or?
Your testimony is at five minutes.
Okay.
Yep.
So I represent over 400 city employees, 200 of which are dues paying members. And I'm here today to ask you, in the interest of the city and the people that live and work here, to go ahead and do what our members did and reject this contract and send it back to the parties, or send the parties back to the negotiating table. The deadline to have a contract in effect, as we've discussed, has passed. And without that sense of urgency, we'll be able to focus on the process and figure out where the compromises are. Barb very clearly stated at the beginning of negotiations, we were not paying back pay. So I just want to make that clear. When I started with the city in 2015 as a seasonal laborer, I was making $10 an hour. Now they're offering $20 an hour for seasonal laborers, and we haven't gotten any. Nobody's applying. Nobody's taking the jobs. When I started as a full-time laborer in 2016, I made $19.19. Under this current contract, a new laborer would make 23, 20, 37 when they start. And I'm sure, you know, everybody's been dealing with these high prices and inflation. But there's still the fallout, because it's going down, the fallout to deal with. People have ruined their savings. People have racked up credit card debt to go ahead and deal with the, you know, high costs. People have had to take on second jobs. Personally, I've taken on a second job. And so your employees are getting burnt out. The city is growing ever larger and placing greater demands on a workforce that remains the same size. Current staffing shortages exacerbate the problem, as there are fewer people to shoulder the burden. I fear that these shortages are only going to get worse as the private sector wages continue to increase, drawing away experience and prospective staff. Ready Mix is currently hiring their drivers at 2350, which is more than 2337. For a laborer, they require a Class B CDL. The city requires a Class A. I put in an application with them in June. I heard back the next day. Meanwhile, the city is struggling to attract applicants. And when we finally extend an offer of employment, the person that we're offering the job to has found another job, and we don't pay enough to draw them back. One example that combines everything I'm trying to explain today is telling you the street maintenance winter, winter snow removal operations. We have expanded the size of our fleet and increased the number of rats we staff. This means that we need more staff to cover each shift of each event. We've also lost at least three longtime employees this year who have either quit or retired. As the winter trudges along, staff grow increasingly more tired and their willingness to volunteer wanes. I've had numerous conversations with all levels of staff, from the director down to the new hires that were trained into plow for the first season, about how to increase participation. Unfortunately, there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution to the problem. Personally, this will be my ninth winter season, and to be honest with you, the novelty of pounding snow wore off a long time ago. But yet I have still consistently posted some of the highest numbers for hours put in, in my department. I show up, I do my job. And that's because I have the privilege of having a wife who gets LPS snow days off. So we haven't had to worry about childcare. However, this winter might be quite different for me. I've taken on a second job, as I said, to go ahead and get our home buying plans back on track. And between that job and this one, I work seven days a week. And so I have very limited availability to work overtime. And the inconsistent and unpredictable nature of winter storms makes planning ahead impossible, and I can't afford to jeopardize long-term income for hopes of working some overtime here. I don't know how many of my other fellow snow fighters, as we call ourselves, I guess, find themselves in a similar position this year, but it won't require a high number to have a significant impact. When we were negotiating during the pandemic, we were told layoffs were possible, and we were offered a one-time, 1% lump sum payment in lieu of an actual raise. We accept that offer, hoping that our understanding during those difficult times will be rewarded later. In 2021, when we were negotiating the current contract, we were proposed a 2.5% raise for this current fiscal year. And then, when we came to the table this time, they offered a 1%, not a 2.5. They offered 1% first. A lot of the people that I represent are essential workers who are responsible for maintaining the infrastructure of this city. Throughout the pandemic, they had to be physically present to do their jobs, so they left their families at home to work alongside their coworkers, unable to observe the social distancing practices and guidelines. They weren't allowed to go ahead and take advantage of the city's work from home policy. And that policy is still in place, and people are still benefiting from it three years later.
Zach, I'm going to give you one more minute to finish up.
We showed up for the city, and I'm here today to ask you to show up for us. Thank you.
You didn't even need another minute.
And so if you would allow me to respond.
One more, I've got about 50 seconds.
Okay. Like I said, they offered the 1%. We had another day scheduled on June 30th, and they canceled that when they offered the last last before that. So we could have continued to sit at the table and try to talk this out a little bit longer. They chose not to. When I went ahead and put forth the dates, the dates in June, they were rejected until they realized that we weren't available for July, and so they asked us to go and come back to the table and moved around the schedule. On July 10th, we hadn't received the contract yet, the, the copy to go ahead and have our vendor, our, our members voted on. Our array, our comp study showed a number of positions that were more than 5% behind. We put forth to have an additional 1.5% for those people to go ahead and bring them up a little bit closer. That was rejected. And something to go and just illustrate how quickly this was rushed and how much unconcern there was. There was a push for gender neutral language, to go ahead and remove pronouns and things like that, to go ahead and limit, instead of having mother, father, husband, wife, spouse, parent, that kind of a thing. Perfectly fine with that. But in their effort to go ahead and do that, they didn't go ahead and consider how it was going to affect the current contract and things were going to change unintentionally. And instead of taking the time to go ahead and work through that language process, they went ahead and just dropped it. And so this was a very rushed process, and now that it's no longer under the deadline, I think we can work a lot better.
Thank you, Zach. We appreciate it. I know, I would imagine we'll have some questions for you, so.
That's absolutely fine.
Questions? Mr. Webber, Councilman, please.
Thank you, Chair Beckheus. Thank you, President Chapo, for being here tonight. If we were to reject this agreement that's before us and go back to the negotiation table as you advocate for, are you optimistic that the two parties could reach an agreement?
I personally would go ahead and try to work with them. Like I said, there are a number of positions where if we had that little extra, that'd be something else to go and bring to our members. And they admit that there are positions that are behind. I don't know if they're the same ones or not. Also, I'm not against kind of working together to go ahead and come up with just an array of cities that we stick to and just have that number as a thing, and then kind of make an argument and a point about how it's difficult to get staff. And that's why you should probably raise the wages a little bit more, because people aren't flying to Des Moines to go and work every day. They're not going down to Wichita. They're not going to Madison or wherever else. They live here. And so only the higher ups are really going to go ahead and be invited in by our pay scales to go ahead and work director positions and things like that, things that get scouted. The people I represent, the blue collar, the clerical, they go here or they go to a factory or something else. They work for a construction company or an office. They don't go ahead and travel far to go and find new positions for the most part. And so I think we could go ahead and come to an agreement. Sorry, I lost.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions, sir?
Uh, not right now.
Okay, very good. Other questions? Yes, Councilman?
How much are you asking for?
Our, so our initial offer was six and a half, which I understand, and like Henry said, movement. At the same time, we don't have the power to go ahead and say, this is our offer, take it or leave it. The city has that power. And so to go ahead and start at anything lower than what they see as our, you know, legally required amount to get is, I think, a little disingenuous. And also, as far as the unfair bargaining, we requested, because there's a city ordinance in the personnel code that says that if they are hiring above the minimum rate for a classification, that they're supposed to go ahead and study that classification to see if it should be adjusted. We requested the, like the titles and the number of positions and the step which they were hired at to go ahead and help during negotiation to make the argument, this is why you should pay these different classifications higher. We did not receive that information. We also went ahead and requested, actually, we, we received some of it, but we were told that it was an incomplete list. We also requested the number of vacancies and how long those positions have been vacant to kind of demonstrate how they need to go and adjust those positions. We currently have three overnight sweepers. I think there's supposed to be five or seven total, and those are constantly understaffed. Nobody ever works at night. And to go ahead and then do the 72 cent or whatever it was, uh, shift differential is laughable if you're not getting anybody to fill those seats. So we just can't keep staff there. If anything, they go ahead and get hired on, do their time, and then till they can go and wait for a position to open up during days. Nobody's incentivized to really stay at night. And so an additional shift differential higher than that to go and actually have people come in would be better. I've also discussed with Director Elliott and Assistant Director Schaefer about reclassifying the overnight position so that they can go ahead and structure it differently so they can pay higher and also so that our members aren't worried about getting bumped to third shift and having their lives suspended.
Councilman Duden, further questions?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Other questions? Yes, Councilman?
So you, how long have you worked for the city for?
Since 2015 is summer help in November and then January 2016, so.
And then, so in addition to working for the city, you also have a second job?
Yep.
And then you also represent your fellow workers in trying to push forward what you think is a fair deal.
Yep.
I just feel like that that should be noted. There's not even a question. I just feel like that that should be noted that, you know, one side you have a, a blue collar person who's working two jobs in addition to trying to provide public service and represent, you know, his fellow workers compared to the city, which has a team of lawyers and a team of negotiators. And I think that there's an imbalance there, and there's not a question in that. I just, something I just want to throw out there for the record.
Appreciate that.
So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All done? Okay, very good. Councilman?
Thank you, Chair Beckheus. President Chapo, you cited a part of this municipal code in response to Councilman Duden's question. Can either you or your legal counsel forward that code to at least my, my email, if not any of my other colleagues' emails as well? So that way we have that and I can review it.
Yeah.
And it, and it doesn't need to be right now.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Other questions? Yes, Councilwoman, please.
President Chapo. Microphone? President Chapo, you mentioned certainly the hardships that you feel your membership have around salary and, and, and you've also asked us to turn down the contract, which leaves some of the benefits, or I guess all of the new benefits, on the table for an indefinite amount of time.
Yeah.
Is that, and that is preferable than a one-year contract?
I take my members voting this contract down as their intent to go ahead and get a better deal. And so if we continue to negotiate and land them a better deal, I think that's keeping with their interest. Also specifically to the paid parental leave. I realize that that was said as not being a thing that we bargained for, and that was just to give me. At the same time, we were told that we wouldn't get it until this contract is settled, and so that's kind of lording it over us. So if you're, if I knew somebody, if I had a member breathing down my neck about how they're about to go and have a kid or whatever, and they need to go and have this because they don't have time, then it puts undue pressure on me to know that they can't get that until this is settled. Whereas, as I understand it, and our legal counsel has said, there could just be a memorandum of understanding put in place to go ahead and have added this benefit to our contract when it was first approved by you guys back in April. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know if that's, but I assume that if he tells me that, that, you know, ethics, you know, rules go ahead and govern him not being able to go and tell me a lie about that kind of a thing.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have one quick question for you.
Yeah.
Could you tell me when you first, when the, when the union first received the request to start negotiations on the con- negotiations on the contract before us today?
I don't remember receiving an official request. I know that prior to its implementation of the paid parental leave, when that was being discussed, we have a monthly, or a quarterly meeting with HR, between the HR and the union presidents, to go and just kind of give us the guidelines of what's going on, and so we can better explain things to our members. When that was offered to us, it was, we talked about being, coming to the table, and that that would go ahead and be part of that. And so, I know that our comp study took longer than we expected, and that was part of our delay. But at the same time, we did send dates for May and then June that were, until she realized that we weren't going to be able to go ahead and meet until, you know, anytime, basically in July, and she called me frantic about needing to go ahead and get it done. I said, "Well, these are the dates we've already sent you." I read them back off to her, and then we went ahead and scheduled times. I work for the city. My time for negotiating is covered by the contract. And so, if they say this is the time and the date and the place, so long as I don't have anything personal, but if otherwise, I'm just showing up to work like I normally, they can go ahead and send me over. We can negotiate any day. It's not really, to me, yes, we have a lawyer that needs to be available, but we sent plenty of dates for May and June, and we couldn't get it done until they became desperate. And like I said, she said, "We're not going to do back pay." That's what she led the negotiations with, is we are not doing back pay. I told my people, "We are not doing back pay." So, that kind of relieves it to make it feel like, I don't know if that's legally possible or not, I don't know how that kind of stuff works, but we were told that during negotiations. And so, that also puts it on, this needs to get done now, or you guys are going to start losing money.
Very good. Thank you. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 6D or 6E? Once again, we have two microphones open, so if there are other people that want to testify after this gentleman, please go ahead and come up and line up here at this microphone. Sir, the floor is yours.
My name is Jeffrey Harrison, 2511 South 52nd Street. So, I'm in a very unique position. So, I've been with the city for just under 15 years. I started as a laborer at Southeast District and then moved up my way. I'm now a supervisor for the preventive maintenance crew out of our South Street location. I've also, I was a board member on PAGE before I left, and now I'm a board member for LCA. In the almost 15 years that I've been here through all the contract negotiations, I have never seen this. It has never come to an impasse, or I can't say it hasn't come to an impasse, but the last time I remember it happening, we went to the CIR, and actually, I sat across, sat with Mary here, and we negotiated for legitimately months all the time. And so, to kind of go with what Zach was saying, this affects all of us through state maintenance. We are responsible for getting snow. Unfortunately, the city has grown exponentially. I have the same amount of people, actually, physically, there's the same amount of people, or actually, less people that work here than there was 15 years ago. But the city is growing. We do not have additional FTEs that are being hired. I have personally seen friends that have said, "I am done with what the city is doing, so I am quitting, and I'm going to go work elsewhere because of my family," or whatever their reasons are. I'd like to see this go back to the table. I would like to see you guys vote against this and have it go back to the table, and so everything is fairly negotiated, because I am very sure that's exactly what the members would want. Because the members of PAGE work for me. They are my crew. They are the guys I see every single day. They're the guys that I've worked with for the last 15 years. And it is, to see the work they put in, and then, not to say that the city is negotiating bad faith, but earlier it was stated that we can't force this upon them, well, that's exactly what you're trying to do here. And yes, you could go back in February, but I remember negotiating in February and still not being done in August, because it was those really tough times with management rights and snow removal, and what do we need to do to get the job done? So, I'm just going to keep it short and sweet. I would like to see you guys vote against this, because I have a lot of friends that work for the city. They're PAGE members, and I have a lot of LCA friends, and this affects all of us, not just PAGE, but also LCA, and up the board and down, because I remember the days Zach got hired. I remember his first day, I actually remember the day that he was offered a position with the city, and I took him out for lunch, and we were happy, because I remember what his situation was before he came to the city, and I was very happy to see him get hired on. And I'm very happy to see where he has come since, well, in his tenure. So, thank you.
Any questions for our testifier?
I have one question, and I promise I won't ask questions if there is a small person that shows up. But, so you've been a member of a board of workers for 15 years, correct?
I don't know the exact date that I joined PAGE, but I would say I probably was in PAGE maybe five, maybe four, four or five years before I was promoted, and then I'd been with the LCA board for maybe two or three.
My reason in asking that is, one, I think it's great that, you know, you're not even a member of this particular union, and you're advocating for these workers. So, I think that's, I think that's great that you're standing up for other workers. My question is, based on your past experience, do you think that the city and PAGE really are at a point where there's not going to be any sort of meat in the middle? Or do you think if we gave them time, they would be able to come to some sort of agreement?
Yeah, they, given time, I honestly, I'm not involved in the negotiations for PAGE, but just having sat there, June to August, that's not enough time. And like Zach says, he gets paid by the union to negotiate. One of the other board members, the head steward, actually works for me.
Gotcha.
And if he says, "Jeff, I need to be off this day because we have negotiations," done. I, no, don't, doesn't even matter. We can schedule work. This is the most important, because it covers so many people.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Yes, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Harrison, thanks for coming forward. I appreciate you taking the time to do this. I am hearing this subtext that there's a bigger issue here about finding staff, and addressing these issues of wages and benefits is one thing the city can do to help you get the crews you need to serve the community. Am I missing that? Is that what?
You are correct. There is, there are things that fall, like I said, I'm, I've been on both sides of the table.
Yes.
So, just currently, right now, we are trying to hire for positions. I currently have a position open at my shop, because I believe it's union, whatever, it gets posted internally first, people internally get to apply for it. If we don't get the enough applicants internally, it gets externally. Total, I believe there's four positions open. The first initial was for three positions at each of the district shops, and then this current position that I'm actually doing interviews for next week is for Northeast District. The first position, three openings, three internal candidates. The one that's going to interview next week, 14 candidates for one position, and I actually just read through all of their applications today, and there are some very good candidates in that pool. So, we hope to get people hired on. One of the problems we run into is now, if you're familiar with the DOT, change their licensing requirements. We used to get people down there, in and out, boom, quick. You had 60 days to get your CDL. Now, it's a Class A CDL with tanker. I just had a gentleman schedule, he's two weeks out for his first test. We can't do this in 60 days. So, if you don't have a CDL, or you are unable to acquire one within, we'll just say, the six-month probationary period, I can't, you can't work for us. You have to go, which that is one less person I have to drive a snowplow in the winter in the middle of the night on Thanksgiving, or Christmas, or New Year's, because I've worked those a lot. A lot.
Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me to think for a moment. My concern, and I ask the question because I see and hear of this hiring problem across our country in every aspect. I work full-time for the Department of Labor, and we hear the stories constantly. And we're discussing money here. Is money the only thing that's going to fix the problem?
Money's, money's part of it, and like Zach said, it's really tough to have someone come in, and we do, and don't get me wrong, the city pays a very good wage. I, like I said, I've been with the city for 15 years. The city has provided me with a very, a very good life. I'm able to own, you know, to own a home. I'm single. Everything's great. But we just, I just attended the APWA Snow Conference in Omaha here a few months ago. Everybody I talked to, across every city entity, all over the United States, and even abroad, hiring is always a problem. City, county, state, doesn't matter. It's always a problem, because you need, we need a very unique person to fill these roles. You have to be able to, essentially, I mean, have any of you ever ridden in one of the snowplow trucks when we've been out?
I've driven one.
If you haven't, if you haven't, I would say, come down to the shop, we'll have, we'll put you in a truck, you can drive with one of our guys. You would be amazed of the craziness that is out there during snow removal. It is, it's eye-opening. It's eye-opening. People's like, "Wow, why are you so tired when you get home?" Come with me for a 12-hour shift. I will show you why I'm so tired. It is, it is, it's crazy, but it's fun. It is. Yeah, I don't, it's partially, it's probably money is partially. My sister works, she's an administrator for LPS. She has the same issue. She was the dive coordinator for Parks and Rec last summer, two summers ago. She couldn't hire lifeguards. Nobody wanted to work, because they can go to Runza, McDonald's, whoever, and make $15, $18 an hour and not have to sit out in the sun and be responsible for some child's life, is how she put it to me. So, yeah.
Other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Appreciate it. Hello, welcome.
Hi.
If there's another testifier, please go ahead and come on down through the open microphone. Sorry, ma'am, the floor is yours.
So, my name's Mary Lowe. I've been a city employee for over 30 years. In fact, it'll be 33 starting in January. I really was just here to say that, you know, the PAGE bargaining unit is really your frontline workers, and as government employees, we're not allowed to strike. So, we will be here regardless. If we're at an impasse, we renegotiate, whatever happens, we will still be here. I also echo Zach's statements in that wages have not kept up with the increased inflation that we have been seeing, but then when you also listen to the news, you see what UPS drivers, Hollywood writers, and now the United Auto Workers are demanding. You know, some of those are 32-hour weeks, 40% increase in wage, and we're looking at three. Along with that is the property taxes, and how they have doubled over the last several years just by your property evaluation. And now, the last week or two, everybody's getting the pink slips that have additional taxing entities that are also increasing their percentage. You know, so that just adds on to everybody's struggling with the wages that we are receiving, and would like to really go back and renegotiate. That's, that's all. You know, we just inform you guys to just vote this down and let us go back and negotiate.
Thank you, Mary.
Yep.
Any questions for our testifier? Okay. Seeing none. You got off easy. It's good, Mary, it's good. Very good. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this issue? Anyone else here to testify on item 6D or 6E on tonight's agenda? Okay, very good. Thank you. We appreciate it, everyone coming down and testifying. Let's go ahead and move on. Madam Clerk?
That concludes Section 6 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 7A is Change of Zone 15013B, application Leo Schumacher to amend the tower heights planned unit development to change the zoning designation from O3 Office Park District to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District on the property generally located at the southwest corner of South 52nd Street and Yankee Hill Road, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion.
Does any, yeah, just a moment. Does any councilmember want to discuss the item that was just called? All right, then let's, let's take just a moment to pause, and, Mr. Chair, would you like to interject another item before we?
No, we are good. Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Then I'll turn it back over to you.
Very good. Are we ready for roll call?
We are. We are ready.
Okay, very good.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 7B is amending Section 12.08.270 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to alcoholic liquor prohibited, exceptions and permanent requirements to amend the alcohol prohibitions at Lincoln Children's Zoo, and repealing Section 3 of Ordinance Number 19120 passed on August 11th of 2008, which requires the Parks and Recreation Department to provide an annual written report to the Internal Liquor Committee due to the lack of any action or any reportable liquor violations for the past 10 years, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion.
I'd like to offer an amendment, motion to amend number one.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman, would you please describe your motion?
I.
Sorry, do we have a second?
You go.
Second, your motion.
Second, Weber. Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
My apologies.
That's all right. I would like to offer the motion that we ask the Lincoln Children's Zoo to provide an annual report on any liquor violations to the city upon request. It was not, it was not an item in the, in the original ordinance, and I think that though the zoo has had a wonderful history in the last 10 years of not having any violations with brews at the zoo, that we're getting ready to, we're looking at expanding the amount of alcohol available at the zoo, not just for 21 and older events, but while children are also present. And I would also like to keep reporting available so that we know what's happening and how things are working out.
Questions for Councilwoman Washington?
What would that look like?
That would look a lot like what we have today. So, today, with the alcohol being extended for adult-only events, not under general admission, the zoo provides, or is supposed to provide, a report to the city about any liquor violations on an annual basis. They've not had any liquor violations in 10 years, but those are 21 and older events where it's a specific area, the zoo, they get banded, you're carded when you come in, and there's no, everyone's over 21. So, if you're not 21, you don't get in. Now, we're in a situation where the zoo is open to other people, but not general admission, and there'll be different ages present, and I just would like to keep some reporting mechanisms so that we can keep track of what's happening.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Yes, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm sorry I did not take the time to read ahead of time, so help me, you got to give me some quiz notes. Annual report, is there an annual date that we're picking that they'll provide it on the first of the year, second of the year? Or did you say it would be more of an ad hoc report on request?
An annual report as needed.
As needed.
Yeah, I'm not going to make a specific date, because there are events that they'll be having alcohol at, could be at different times of the year.
So, there could be, once a year, they come forward and say, "We have nothing to report," and that would be their report?
That would be fine with me.
Other, Councilman Shob, all finished?
No, I'm sorry. You say I'm all finished.
Okay, very good. Councilman Weber?
I was pointing to.
Oh, Councilman Duden, I'm sorry. Please, proceed.
I want to point out that we would be able to get this information anytime we wanted it. All we have to do is ask the police department what violations took place at the Children's Zoo.
We could do that, but we wouldn't have a back-and-forth conversation about, you know, can you explain the circumstances, and are there other ways to address these[1731.08] And are there other ways to address these issues? I'm really looking for a conversation. I can get a report, you're right. But it doesn't elicit a conversation. And this is a, I think this is just a good way to keep those, those doors open.
Other questions, councilman? Any other questions? Councilman Weber?
I, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Washington for bringing this amendment. I think the original idea behind this ordinance is a great step for the, the Children's Zoo. And I'm really supportive of it. But I think maintaining a reporting mechanism, in my opinion, is common sense. So I appreciate you bringing it forward and, and tend to support the amendment as well as the main motion.
Okay, very good. Assuming we have no further questions, let's go ahead and move to a vote on the motion to amend.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
The main motion. Any comments, questions?
I wish the zoo the very best of luck as they jump into this brave new world.
And you hope they never forget to us.
I just hope we don't see people walking like those penguins in there.
Fair. Anyone else?
I, I just will say that I think as times change, it's important that we update policies and procedures to make sure that we remain to be a competitive city and, and a destination for people to come and see what Lincoln has to offer. So I'm really excited to see the zoo take this on.
Okay, very good. Let's call the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Sorry.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
That was a good confusion there.
Motion carried 7-0.
It's been a day.
That concludes Section 7 of our agenda. Section 8 is Resolutions First Readings for Items 8A and 8B. Section 9 is our pending list, item 9A.
Tonight, anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda nor planned for a future agenda may do so at open microphone session, which is tonight. Individuals are allowed of a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. Is there anyone here who would like to speak during open microphone session tonight? If so, please come forward. Come on down. Welcome back.
Hi.
If you could please start with your name and address.
My name's Mamun. My name's Mamun Khorashy. And I currently live at AD40 Abigail Drive. As you guys know, I've been here a few times and come here once again with some more information after learning more about it. So, last time I came here, I talked about, like, overall, the concept of density and whatnot, especially just in urban core, especially like Lincoln. After looking more, so here's a little background about myself. Originally before we moved to Lincoln a few years ago, we lived in a small town near San Jose. And in San Jose, what they recently proposed and introduced is a new type of zoning called village development. So what I come here today is to say, elaborating further from what I've said previously, a way to, Lincoln is growing, as everybody says. Up, spreading out, every way possible, it's grown. And I think one of the main things that needs to be into consideration that's underlooked is, of course, density. Especially with neighborhoods continuing and continuing to build single-family housing. As an example, LPS just opened Standing Bear High School, which I go to. So you have Standing Bear here. And there's also Maryland More that was opened up a few years ago over here. In between, it's fields right now. And there's a ton of single-family housing being made there. And I think one of the issues is, there's not enough, like, I'm not saying density to the fullest extent, like downtown with skyscrapers and what, but other districts like Village Gardens. Because when you build specifically only single-family housing in these areas and continue to expand outwards without basic necessities like grocery stores, gas stations, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, it's going to cause a lot of problems. More maintenance, more traffic, because those people have to commute longer to work, to the grocery stores, et cetera. I think there should be a way where, like Pocket Parks as an example in neighborhoods, there could be Pocket Districts where stuff like basic necessities like small gas stations and small grocery stores are introduced in those areas so that there's time reduced in traveling so that people in that specific neighborhood could easily access those basic necessities at a convenient location instead of taking extra time each and every day or per week to go to the grocery store, et cetera. And especially with those locations, it can introduce, as I said, mom and pop shops as an example. So people from one school could travel after school to that location and have fun with friends with one another. And as I brought up as an example, Village Gardens, a neighborhood that was made. I walked down there with my father. It was a pretty nice neighborhood. And I have a ton of friends in Standing Bear. They go there all the time when they live in the neighborhood. Because they have a few shops that they're able to just conveniently bike to and just hang out there. They're able to socialize, eat, go check out some shops and whatnot. And that's able to bring a healthier lifestyle to them plus create more convenience because they could be saving so much time instead of having to travel five, like 10 minutes to drive to go to the gro, to go to a Hy-Vee, like five miles away or whatever. But instead, there's a convenience store nearby and they could grab smaller stuff each day if necessary. So, I think that definitely, especially when approving projects that, like near Northwest Lincoln, near Northwest High School, there's a lot new single-family and apartments and townhouses and commercial space. I think this should be a consideration to allow for both vehicle traffic as well, but also pedestrian travel as well and creating more social, social spaces that allow for both, both types of interactions. Not just one type of travel method, so the driving and kind of complete defeating the entire purpose of creating a vibrant neighborhood as well. Because this, these type of small little centers are able to create vibrancy in neighborhoods as well, especially when single-family housing is built in a very similar manner. That's it, though. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Counselors, do we have any questions?
I just want to say, I think, I always appreciate you coming down to talk. Is this your mom or your sister?
Mom.
That's your mom?
Yeah.
No, no, I was just going to say that I think, one, that's awesome that you show up to support your son. My mom shows up to council meetings too, back over there. So someday, when you're back over here, your mom will still be showing up to support you. So, can't wait to have you up here and can't wait to see you at future council meetings.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I would just like to share with you as well, the city of Lincoln has an internship program for youth. We can talk about that if you'd like.
All right.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak during open microphone, or, I'm sorry, public comment?
This is actually Jeff Harrison, 2511, South 52nd Street. This is just a question because I was here last Tuesday or for the pink slip. Yeah, that was fun. But after that, I realized that Councilman Duden has a meeting at Gear Library. But unfortunately, I live on the wrong side of 56th Street. So, Councilman Carlson, are you planning on doing something similar?
I, not at this time, but happy to talk or meet with you too. We can talk after tonight if you want.
Yeah, I was just going back and forth and I was like, I was like, because I vote all the time, it's like, wait a second, I don't remember seeing Duden on there. I don't think.
You can move.
I can't. It costs too much money to move across the street on the other side of 56th Street. That was my only question. I was gonna, I was gonna email you, but I thought, I'm gonna be down here anyway, so why not just ask?
We can chat afterwards here if you got a minute.
Yeah.
We can chat, so.
Sure. No problem.
Good deal.
Thanks.
Very good. Anyone else here who would like to participate in public comment tonight? Please come, come on down.
Sean Wheat, 538 North 24th Street, apartment number 6. The timer is going. So, good evening, City Council. My name is Sean Wheat and I live in Brody's district. And we have had quite the meeting, as we've seen. And, you know, I don't really have, you know, I'm gonna use up all the five minutes. I'm not going to go over. But I have sort of a smorgasbord of grievances to air and comments to make. And I just really want to reflect on tonight. It was so, really powerful seeing President Shepoe's speech and the comments made by Jeff back there. And, you know, you know, I, I really can second what President Shepoe said about having to work, you know, seven days a week.
Mr. Reed, I'm going to interrupt you here very quickly.
Yes, sir.
My apologies. Our public comment rules and regulations.
Oh, it can't be about the aforementioned?
Yeah, you need to stick to subjects that are not on today's agenda nor planned for a future agenda.
Understood, sir. My, my apologies. I, thank you, Mr. Beckius. So, yeah, well, in that, with that being stated, I'm then not going to talk about any of that aforementioned stuff. So yes, Mr. Weber represents me and he's doing a really good job. And I live in a, you know, in his district. And I really like what I'm seeing out of Brody. And I really like what I'm seeing out of the city council. You know, I remember when Richard McGinnis was on here, how he's done a good job. And I'm really liking what I'm seeing out of Lincoln. And, you know, it goes back to really, with, you know, United States, right? We, the people. And what I, my, you know, goals for the city council would just be to continue to operate upon the way it was operating. Now, for those, so the only people here that I know besides Brody, Sandra, I saw you at the 2022 Juneteenth Festival in Trago Park, off of Vine and 27th. And, you know, that, but otherwise, I don't, you know, know any of you council members personally. And really, what I am all about here is seeing what, what we can do together, what we can do together. And I think that for our city, I'd say unity is a huge thing. We have, you know, programs for our homeless. And I'm also really gonna, you know, state as well with my background. So basically, for those, if anybody, maybe you can raise your hands in the back or whatever. If any, did anyone here see the county board meeting for last week on Tuesday? Maybe a show hands of the audience or anybody here? I spoke during that public comment. And that went really well, right? So it was, it was, Kristi Yocum was there, Matt Schlute was there.